It's called the Mad Rap. They do, he covers.
And we can frame that.
Uh, he covers rapper Hannibal Madison. And then he started doing Green, because Green does anybody covering this there. So he picked up Green kinda.
Wow.
Sorry, I hit you a little hard. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Couple people talking. All right, I call this a regular September meeting of the Luray Town Council to order. Would you please stand and join me in a moment of silence? I'll ask Councilman Vickers to leave us in a minute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Danielle, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Dochmar?
Here.
Mr. Vickers?
Here.
Ms. Lillard?
Here.
Mr. Shiro?
Here.
Mr. Pettit?
Here.
Mr. Sowers?
Here.
And Mr. Webb?
Here.
Okay, do we have any additions or deletions to, additions to or deletions from the addition? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to move the, to approve the filing consent agenda. The minutes of the regular council meeting, August the 8th of 2022, and the council payable totaling $207,147.27.
Second.
Any discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Danielle. No one has signed up for general citizen comments. Does anyone here this evening want to make a comment? Thank you all for being here, and we'll move on. Uh, LDI, Ms. Elliott? Always a pleasure.
Always a pleasure to see you, Mayor, Council. Just a couple of quick things. The, if anyone noticed today, the, the audience came down off of the Artisans Building, so we're making progress. We're getting there. Porch and Vine made an official announcement that they will be opening, as it looks now, spring of 2023, and they've already put out their hiring information. So they, it looks like they're moving along up there as well. Sunflower Festival was a huge event for us again this year. It went great. We had over 2,000 in attendance, because just here, we actually count it. We had someone counting out front, and we had over 2,000 in attendance. So I think this is an event that's gonna continue to, to just grow and to be more and more popular in the valley all the time. Lots and lots of visitors. I had many phone calls of people inquiring, and one of the things I think that makes it so neat is a lot of the calls I receive were, what are you charged to get in? And when people hear that it's free and that the activities are free, I think that makes a big impact, and it makes it a family fun event. So I'm proud that we're able to do that. And a big shout out to Jen Jenkins and her staff. They just do an incredible job. They step up every time to the plate when we have an event, and they just do such great work. And then the other thing is Halloween will be October the 31st. We will be having it on the date. Uh, we'll be doing it downtown like we've been doing in the past this year. Paca will be doing the costume contest again. We have added a pet contest and a, um, family costume contest as well with the, and then the other age division. So I think that's going to be a lot of fun for folks. We'll be having the candy checking station at the visitor's center, and we'll also be having people set up on the plaza as well as our merchants on Main. So I think we're gonna have another great event. Hopefully, it won't rain this year. And, um, we're gonna be holding it from 5 until 6:30, because we wanna give the children time to get out of school and parents to get home and get them ready to come down. So that's kinda what we've got going on right now. And we're also in the planning of first night for, uh, New Year's Eve. We had our first planning meeting this week, um, or last week, excuse me, last Thursday, and so we're working on that. And we had Virginia Main Street here. We have a new rep. Her name is Blair Berger. She was here, um, the Wednesday a week ago, and we had a really great visit, and it was her first visit to Luray, and she was really impressed with our Main Street and with what we have to offer, so.
Jackie, are we closing the street for Halloween?
No, sir. But we could if you wanted to. It makes me nervous, but I understand why the chief doesn't wanna do it. I get it, so, but yeah. So I hope you guys can come out and join us.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Public hearing, Fairview subdivision boundary line adjustment. Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. Council's requested to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen input and to consider a request from Ramsay Inc. to adjust the town boundary line adjustment to incorporate 14 residential lots into the Fairview subdivision from the county into the town as low-density R1 residential zoning district. The boundary line adjustment would be a voluntary on the part of the town and the county as detailed in the boundary line adjustment agreement. As detailed in the free annexation agreement, the roads for the subdivision will be private and maintained by the Fairview subdivision Property Owners Association, and the county will be considering this boundary line adjustment agreement later in September. Following approval by both bodies, the town and county would then petition the circuit court for, uh, Page County to approve the agreement.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burke. All right, do we? All right, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. No one has signed up to speak at the public hearing. Does anyone here in the audience wish to speak? Mr. Burke, do you have any letters?
Yes, sir.
Anything?
Uh, this afternoon, we received a comment from Beverly and Michael Reich of 499 South Antioch Road, Luray Town Council. We oppose the boundary line adjustment agreement for the Fairview Estates project. The developer knew when purchasing the property that it was mostly in Page County with substandard lot sizes in the middle of farmland. In spite of that, he plowed a street through it and laid a water line and began home construction as though he had prior commitment from town officials on incorporating the project into the boundaries without approval from any of the citizenry, town, or county. City streets with accompanying light pollution, extra unwarranted noise and traffic are not welcome here in the quiet countryside. Our Commonwealth was wise to outlaw annexation 50 years ago. It needs to be respected. Page County is famous for its beautiful mountain views. Keep it that way.
All right. All right, hearing no one else wanted to speak, I will close the public hearing. Council, discussion?
I've got a question, I guess, a couple of questions. As I look at this, um, well, the first question is, I wasn't familiar with any annexation, annexation of a street or any existing streets within the town that are part of a POA, part of a Property Owners Association, as far as the maintenance and upkeep and stuff of that. I was, and I mean, I'm, I'm looking for input here from other council members. I was thinking that the streets that do exist within the town are all maintained by the town when it comes to snow removal, asphalt repairs, you know, whatever. So I didn't know if venturing into something new with their private.
There are some.
There are a handful, maybe a dozen, uh, roads that the town does not maintain within the town limits. Hilltop Lane is one of them. Brian?
Nun Lane, primarily alleys.
I was thinking, I mean, I know some alleys, just like what's going behind us with baby moods. I mean, we.
Yeah, primarily alleys, uh, that were quasi-streets, you know, at some point in the past, uh, because permits were issued on them, but, um, they're variable width and as far as street streets, like when they did the 86 annexation, you know, like West Loop and everything like that, those came in, you know, and we basically had to take them in whatever condition they were in. But at the time that, that, that annexation or that boundary line adjustment took place, we, uh, then we took those streets, you know, the town agreed, you know, accepted those streets. In this particular case, uh, the developer's not asking for that, um, so.
What? We had to bring them up to, we didn't, we didn't bring them up to VDOT standards before we accepted. We're, we're getting, we're now getting VDOT money for like West Loop, I think, aren't we?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, because we've, over time, you know, the town was able to make those to the point where they were able to be, receive maintenance dollars.
Right.
Well, I guess my concern is, I, you know, when you take like Nun Lane and, and some of these would, like I said, I view those basically as alleys, uh, somewhat in St. Street. Most of those just have a handful of houses, a couple of them on it. This one being 14 lots just on this section. I guess where I'm going with this is, once those lots are developed and people are living there, there's gonna be a request of these, I'm sure, of the residents there to, to eventually get that into the town system and the, the maintenance and all that comes with it, which leads me to my next question. The, the unimproved street that's proposed on here goes down and, and basically ends at Ellis Drive. It actually has some radiuses proposed as if that's gonna connect to Ellis Drive. But Ellis Drive is also a private right-of-way for the homes that are there with the Property Owners Association. And I did reach out last night. I spoke with Danny Pressgraves, who has lived there since the 80s, who handles that maintenance on that road through lining up the gravel and all the stuff that the people pay in. He expressed that they had had no contact and were even aware of this, and that they have no intention of allowing that to connect to their private road unless there came a time that all, all of that was taken into VDOT road system, to where their road is then maintained, you know, in the county road system under VDOT. So with that said, I'm seeing a street that goes down there and terminates at Ellis Drive with no cul-de-sac, and if the owners of Ellis Drive never agree to let that come on to and connect to them, we've got a situation like we've got at Meadow Lane, um, the end of Bank Street, a few where we have a street go up, there's no cul-de-sac, there's nowhere to turn around, other than the residents' driveways. You know, you're grounded, pulling into someone's driveway to turn around if you get to the end of that street. Meadow Lane has two of them. Cedar Knolls has one, um, up there at the end, but that's a, that's a situation with a fuel truck, propane truck, a fire truck, whatever that runs down that lane has to back all the way out of that, because there's nowhere to turn around. So I'm not against the annexation. I'm just concerned of what future problems lie with this with, with no way to turn around at the end of a street, and it just dead-ends where it meets another private road that may never connect.
I don't think Ellis, Ellis Drive is an unimproved county roadway, I believe.
Well, I spoke with Mr. Pressgraves last night. He said they, they, that's the, that's the property.
I, I, I know they, uh, they maintain it, but I, I thought it was an unimproved county roadway.
We had understood from the county that they had, that they were comfortable with that connection and had specifically worked out the survey as well as the, the radii for the connection to Ellis, so, uh, any of the concern, the, from the county, the, the county administration perspective, that the connection was compliant with whatever they had reviewed.
I might wanna check on that, because I, I mean, I, I know Danny knows guys put gravel down and maintain it.
Right.
But I, I believe it is an unimproved county roadway.
Okay, well, according to him and what the other owners think, that it's their, that it's their right-of-way.
I might wanna check on that.
Yeah, it looks like there's been lack of communication between the county, the developer and the town, as far as those residents don't, don't know this is how, connected, so.
I had checked with David Atwood, uh, at Harrisonburg, that Ellis was not listed, it doesn't have a route number posted on it, um, and he said he was not able to locate it in the secondary system for Page County. That doesn't mean it doesn't exist, but we'll double-check on that. But, um, he had initially looked at that, you know, before, because I guess somebody from the county contacted Harrisonburg too and says, what do we do when this thing comes? And, you know, and they really, he was like, well, if it's more than 150 feet from Fairview, they would not consider, if they're 150 feet or less, they will consider that as being a connectability, something under their regulations, but if it's more than that, which this is definitely more than that, it would be an issue.
I just know, I thought that they had tried to get it in the six-year plan a couple times to have it paved, and it would have to have been a county roadway for them to do that. But I, I may be wrong on that. I don't, I don't know.
It's only qualified for a rural road addition, you know, under the secondary system, but the county, the county would have to propose that to VDOT, and then, um, it's definitely got enough right-of-way, 60-foot wide right-of-way for Ellis, but, um, and we had looked at this with, um, I guess it was one of those occasions, Mr. Shiro, years ago, about where they had maybe tried to pursue it, and maybe it happened, maybe it didn't, and I don't know, but we'll follow up on that.
Where are the, so where are the duplexes at now, that he, that Chris's, Mr. Ramsey's built?
They're not there. What, what he's looking to do is to bring in these 14 lots that are in the county. Once he brings them in, he would then rezone those, those properties to R3 to build duplexes and subdivide those 14 lots into the 28.
Oh, okay, okay. I mean, I think bringing it into the town makes sense. I was gonna ask the same thing with, with Jason asked. You know, I think it would make sense if it does, I mean, how, if it did connect to Ellis Drive, that, that to me, a through-street would be logical, but I guess we'd probably need to find out, I mean, um, some sort of a plan for improving the road. Um, I mean, is he just planning on just keeping it gravel and a, I mean?
It is my understanding.
Just graveling it and having the, the homeowners association or whatever? Not against that idea, but, um, it is kind of a, ideally, the developer would build a road to the minimum VDOT standard and then dedicate it, uh, and then we could have a discussion about coming out on Ellis, but, um, I mean, our code allows for private? That is, okay. Again, if we can see the agreement, uh, but I guess it's tonight, just sort of, we're just discussing the annexation, um, and then if he annexes, I'm gonna make sure I understand, then would he would come in and, and petition the town to subdivide it?
Yes, sir. Basically, tonight is the public hearing for consideration of the friendly boundary line adjustment between the town and county to bring this property into the town limits. As part of the agreement, oh, I apologize, there's a page. One second. Uh, if you go to page two of the pre-annexation agreement, development details, upon execution of this agreement, Ramsey agrees to submit an application to the town requesting that Ramsey's lots in the development be rezoned to R3 zoning along with payment for the application publication fees. So basically, the pre-annexation agreement confirms that once the town has and county have agreed to bring it in, he will pursue the R3 for the.
Because these, these lots have tax map numbers.
Yes, sir. There, there are, they are 14.
Okay.
Lots existing within Page County.
I got you.
The developer wishes to bring them into town so that he can then get in-town utility connection rates as well as rezonate for its townhome.
If we brought it in town, then can we have a conversation with him a little more detail about the road, the, the standard he's gonna build it to as part of the rezoning potentially?
Potentially for the rezoning, yes, sir, but that would only be the 14 lots. He's already gotten approval for the subdivision of the lots that are within the town limits that connect up to Fairview on a private road.
And he, he's, he's intent to leave that gravel? Is that what you're saying?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
But on page one, it specifies these 14 lots in part of this agreement, and even the, the radius is on, um, lot seven and lot eight. So it looks to me like if we approve this, we're not just approving the annexation. As I read this in the agreement, we're approving the layout and what exists there, as well as the annexation. It's specific to these lots in the wording on page one, um, of this agreement. So my, it's back to my concern is, if it cannot, if it turns out that it cannot or will not be connected to Ellis Drive, I see a problem that's being created in the initial approval of this, that there's no cul-de-sac at the end, and, well, Baker Developments even here tonight, that's coming up later in ours, where Planning Commission looks at that, and there's cul-de-sac improvements, and something moves in the radius, and, you know, everything as far as being to standards. So we're, we're looking at being required for some, you know, for a larger development, but then we're, we're not even requiring it on this. And for me personally, I just see whoever winds up living and buying these lots within that, um, are gonna have that problem down the road if it doesn't connect to Ellis Drive.
And we had this, we had similar questions. That's why this is, I think this has been in discussion for about a year now. And again, because Ellis was in the county, we relied on the county to resolve any of the connection issues. And part of the, the delay in bringing this to town council was the county and the servier for the applicant to resolve what the, the, uh, the survey connection, if you will, to Ellis. So it, and we did, we'll check on it, but it was our understanding that that had been resolved at a county level, just because it wasn't.
If I recall correctly, the first time this came to us, it did not connect to Ellis.
Correct.
And we asked that it, that we, that it should be connected to Ellis.
Right, if it connects to Ellis, if that's, if, if we know that that is what's gonna happen with this development, I don't have the, I don't have the problem. But it sounds tonight like, both what I've talked with, with some citizens that live there, is that we're uncertain of whether that can or will be connected to Ellis. That's my concern tonight. If it connects to Ellis, the cul-de-sac is a moot point. It's, and it goes through, and we don't have that problem with vehicles, you know, turning around.
It gets back to the question, is that a private right-of-way or a?
Right, which we don't.
And again, council does not have to take action tonight, if, if, and that is a significant issue, and so, again, we conducted, y'all conducted the public hearing, so if, if there is a concern on, on council's part, we can definitely contact the county, contact the applicant, and, and confirm what we had understood that they had resolved.
Am I okay with that? We'll just table it till next?
If someone needs to make a motion to table it, that's, I'll make a motion, uh, that this annexation agreement be tabled until we, um, get answers to the, the eventual improvement and standard of, of the proposed Arthur Drive. Is that what it's being called?
Yes, sir.
And if connecting to Ellis Drive is indeed, I guess allowable. So I'll make a motion that we table this until we further study and hopefully can take it back up at the next regular meeting.
Any discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
All right, Baker Development, Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider the preliminary and final plan applications received from Baker Development Partnership LLC for the subdivision of two parcels into 31 townhome lots along Ray Court and subdivision of four parcels into 44 townhome lots along the proposed Caterpillar Drive for the Luray Landing Plant Neighborhood Subdivision. Uh, the Planning Commission considered the preliminary and final plan at their August 10th meeting and unanimously recommended conditioned approval, uh, with the following items, ensuring that remote parking was located within 1,200 feet for all townhomes and that all minimum radii for temporary cul-de-sacs met town standards. Baker has revised the plans to comply with those conditions and, uh, it's ready for council's consideration.
If you would like me to go through the changes, I'll be delighted with that.
Counsel, would we, Tyler, to go through those?
Well, I mean, we can.
I don't know. I'd like to see what it is.
Yeah, go ahead, Tyler. Thank you.
So this is Ray Court. Um, previously, we had, hey, give me a pointer. Hate to see how much coffee I've had today.
Yeah.
So on Ray Court, we did have, in the initial preliminary and finals that the Planning Commission looked at, we had a hammerhead here as part of those revisions from staff on our construction plans. We did put a, uh, put a town standard cul-de-sac in this location, and we ended up dropping a unit off this side, so we are one short on Ray Court, but we did provide the cul-de-sac, um, as required. And then if you go to, next one, yeah. So on Caterpillar, we had a temporary cul-de-sac, um, shown here, and these lots, there was four future lots on this side, and there was also four future lots here that had, well, actually, those lots had been, um, yeah, and those four lots as well, I'm sorry. So now what we've done is removed that cul-de-sac to, to meet that 1,200-foot, um, radii on the parking requirement. We did end up putting a parking lot in this area to connect that to Baker. Um, so we'll have to go back and remove four lots off Baker Drive that we already have pre-approved and to put that parking lot through here to meet that requirement, and in doing so, we lost four lots off of Caterpillar as well. So, um, that's the, basically, the two situations that we have revised these. So in both cases, we've lost lots, um, and we've run that through, and we should be good to go if you guys are. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
So any questions for Tyler?
Um, I don't know if this would be the opportunity to talk about the pond. Would it be the opportunity?
I would like to make a motion on this and.
Make, okay. We can talk about that next.
Yeah.
Regarding the parking lots, I mean, how many, how many vehicles is that accommodating in the, was the original plan, it just didn't seem necessary?
No, we had, we had enough parking originally, but the, the ordinance had a 1,200-foot radius between any, any lot, so basically, it wasn't too far away from all the lots getting there. So we put one there in the middle between Caterpillar and Baker, which then met that, that radius, and we actually had, ended up dropping parking required that we had put here on the side. So now all parking's covered in that one lot, in that lot, and we have one, um, that's right there in, between Allison and College.
I like more houses than less houses. I wanted to understand that, so.
Yeah. Yeah, code requires two and a half spaces per lot, and that half space gets us, and that's where we had to end up adding additional parking.
And Baker can't, there, there were four lots on the southern side of Caterpillar that, due to the fact that they were shown, presented to the Planning Commission as future lots, um, Baker can't come back and, and add those four to the subdivision at a later date, it was simply to meet the, the code requirements. We couldn't, they couldn't incorporate those as new lots for all when they weren't shown to the Planning Commission.
Anybody else? Any questions for Tyler? All right, thank you, Tyler.
I can stand up here first.
Do we make a motion on the, on this? Do we make a motion on the, on this?
Well, let's.
Yeah.
Well, y'all go here.
I'll make the motion. I move that the town council approved the subdivision application from Baker Development Partnership LLC for the subdivision of parcels forty-two A eight dash A dash three and forty-two A eight dash A dash one D into thirty-one townhouse lots along the proposed Ray Court. And the subdivision of parcels forty-two A seventeen dash one dash one six seven, forty-two A eight dash A dash one, forty-two A eight dash A three and forty-two A one seven dash one dash nine nine into forty-four townhouse lots along the proposed Caterpillar Drive for the La Ray Landing Plant Neighborhood Subdivision.
All right. Any discussion? Nice job there, Jason. That's a lot. All right. No discussion? Danielle?
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shire?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb, you want to slip the pond?
Yeah, I just, I know we had the email from Dwayne and I did get the, we all got the letter from Ms. Butler. I guess she's the program administrator for the Stormwater. Paige does manage on Stormwater. Some municipalities will, will, will farm it out to the DQ. Am I correct? Right. And I'm just looking at the GIS maps and, I mean, going back, this pond looks like it has been there at least for fourteen years. Look at the twenty-eleven maps on GIS. I know this is not necessarily, you know, rationale for changing the Stormwater Plan, but if we're worried about foul at the airport, I mean, it seems like the river's maybe more of a, a potential foul location. And given this has been here now for going on, I mean, it looking, really looks like almost back since two thousand and two. I do think it's a nice amenity. And I think you can even, I don't know, Tyler, you tell me, could even argue that filling it up could be detrimental to the Stormwater sort of flows out there.
I have computations that, that prove that it, in the final condition, that it will work. I personally have, have reservation knowing how well it's worked for so long and what it's done to improve all of that drainage along Hayfield Road that had, had immense problems prior to this. And it is a community feature. I know it's not technically in the town's green space to have that as a, as an amenity. But as anyone knows who's been there, I mean, there's always people that are fishing. It's, it has, it has a good, a good use. I personally don't see the issue. Obviously, we know what the, what the airport has there. But, but I, I fully agree that I would, we know it works now very well, actually.
And it was a, it was a lot of issues prior to this. I mean, there were a lot of, lot of issues. So I just feel real silly seeing that filled up. And again, I know we have this Stormwater Letter here. I'd just like to talk to the airport and see if there's somewhere this could be revised, work with the airport, just in a, you know, nature of understanding that there, if you look at the map, you can see that the golf course has several ponds, you know. I, I just would like to do everything we could do within a reason to preserve this. And again, it's working.
You speak to be down maintenance and they'll tell you the same thing.
Right. And.
Yeah. I, I spoke to Powell today, Powell Markowitz. I don't, I got the impression from the conversation that if the county would agree to it, that, that they wouldn't particularly have heartburn over it if the county agreed to it. He was telling me that the county was the one that insisted. And I know, Dwayne, you told me that they're kind of pointing fingers at each other, which is, and it's what, what we in local government do sometimes. But I, I mean, that, my conversation with Powell was that he thought that, that the county was not, wouldn't allow it to be a wet pond. And then he, he gave me a copy of this letter, which I forwarded to Steve, and I hadn't seen this letter before. It just, it was just written August tenth. So I guess that was, that was prompted by you guys contacting the county to see if, if they would agree to it. And they seemed pretty, they seemed pretty emphatic here that they wouldn't agree to it. So, but I, I, I guess the only way to do is appeal it, the decision, the, and see what the airport authority has to say about it. But again, my conversation with Powell was that the, they based it on FAA recommendations. Of course, FAA recommended that it not be, that it be filled. But.
The key word is recommendation.
Yeah, it, that's true. I mean, that's what I'm saying. But I, first step here would be see if the county would agree to it.
Sure, I heard Matt and Karen's original meeting with Powell, being there was an existing pond there prior to his purchase. And he could say that was his original.
Yeah. Well, it's, again, it's the county that's denying it.
Last time we met with the county, Wayne, Karen, myself, county wanted to leave it.
Well, I would, I mean, it's worth a try. I mean. Well, I don't know who's, I don't know who's pointing the finger at who. But anyway, if, I, I think this thing to do would be see if the county will agree to it and we'll see what the airport says about then. Because it's my understanding, the airport authority actually has no, other than the overlay, has no authority to dictate Stormwater Management Practices and that sort of thing. Now, they may, they may, the county Stormwater, when they're reviewing it, may weigh heavily on what FAA recommends. But if the county signs off on it, I think that that would be, we'd be able to, I mean, should be able to do it if the county would agree to it. But.
And I think it's important that it is, it does appear to be working. I mean, it, it is working. I mean, and that was something that when I worked for the town, that was a big issue for years, was to get this agreement. And then some of the neighbors were not happy and they were in and out. And now we've got something that working and to go and then fill it in because of, you know, it just, it just seems a little, I, I just can't imagine doing that. So I, I hope everybody can work together and don't go fill it in just yet. So.
So, I mean, how do we do this? How do we appeal to the county?
Question, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
In your discussion with the county, were they amenable at all to a potential modification if the airport authority had no strong objection to the pond remaining? Or did you guys get to that point?
Last time we met with them, she said they was okay leaving. All the pressure was coming from the airport.
Who's all first?
So maybe the thing to do, Mayor, I would recommend is maybe get all the bodies in the, in a room together, at least one person from each group together in the same room at the same time and say, if they're willing to accept the modification to the Stormwater permit that county has, because they're the regulatory authority in Page County and the airport has no strong objection, they, they may make a, you know, well, our guidelines say this, but we won't object as long as the DQ's permit is modified. Maybe that's the best way to go about it. Just a suggestion.
What I count that, that retain, that retainage of water, that extra retainage that stays there now in the final computation. So leaving it changes nothing in terms of one page. So I can make that formal modification request very simply. That's nothing, nothing changed.
Good idea, Ryan. So do we organize that?
I can work with Tyler and we can try to get something and set up with Kelly and either Powell or somebody from Airport Authority or maybe Mr. Shire if things go well later in the meeting and have a.
I knew I was walking in.
Better best man on the scene.
Welcome to the town council. Yeah. And then we'll.
I haven't been approved.
Hopefully we'd have Lisa preliminary answer by the time you guys meet again. So you have your next round of meetings.
Anybody okay with that? We don't need to vote on that. All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Youth football field use agreement. Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider approval of the field use equipment and maintenance agreement for the La Ray youth football and cheer for use of Field Three at Dean Park.
Any counsel, any questions about that? We've done this in the past, haven't we, Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. We, we're catching up. The youth football has been using it for a number of years and we've had a similar agreement with the Little League and we've finally been able to get them so that we can get this agreement with them as well.
Ready for a motion?
Yes.
Any discussion? I move the town council approved the field use equipment and maintenance agreement for the La Ray youth football and cheer use of Field Three at Dean Park as presented and authorize the town manager to execute the agreement.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing that, Danielle?
Mr. Shire?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Okay. Airport Authority Town Representative, Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider a request from Powell Markowitz to, with the La Ray Page County Airport Authority to appoint Vice Mayor Jerry Shiro as the town's representative to the authority to replace Mark Johnson for a four-year term beginning August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
I'm sure there's no discussion.
Who's this guy?
Unless Jerry wants to.
Yeah, I might have some discussions. Have a resume or anything.
All right. Let's get a motion here quick.
I move that the town council appoint Jerry Shiro as the town's representative to the La Ray Page Airport Authority for a term that expires August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Second.
Any discussion?
One's anxious.
Again, let's hurry up before you change your mind. Danielle?
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shire?
I guess I would have stamed from that.
Oh, that's true.
Congratulations, Mr. Shiro.
Thank you. Sounds like it's going to be fun.
All right. VML Conference Voting Delegate, Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider a request from the Virginia Municipal, Municipal League to appoint the town's voting delegate for the VML Annual Business Meeting scheduled Monday, October third in Richmond. Historically, the town has nominated the mayor to represent the town.
I think we stick with history.
What time is the meeting? Do I have to get it?
Well, I'd like to move that the town council appoints Mayor Jerry Duckmire as the town's voting delegate for the twenty-twenty-two VML Annual Business Meeting.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing that, Danielle?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers? Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shire?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Waste water treatment plant operator incentives. Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider approval of the licensure salary adjustments for water treatment plant operators. Currently, the town's personnel policy manual provides a salary adjustment for employees obtaining class one to class four licenses. The Virginia Department of Professional and Occupational Regulation has established five, a class five and six operator designations to further the training of water treatment op, plant operators. And staff would recommend that a class six salary adjustment be five hundred dollars and a class five be seven hundred and fifty dollars to coincide with the other salary adjustments for the existing four license.
Obviously, it's negligible, but what would be the estimated financial impact? Not much, but.
Well, historically, the, the class five and six have actually been on the books with the state for a long time. We've just not had anyone that got that. We now have two new operators and they are both pursuing their class six. So this year, it would be at most a thousand dollars. Next year, it would be fifteen hundred dollars. And with the way that we're presenting this is that if for any reason the state ever adds class five and six to wastewater, they would have a similar opportunity.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea. I'd like to move the town council approves the amendment for chapter ten dot two dot one licensure salary adjustments of the town's personnel policy manual to establish salary adjustments for class five and six operators.
All right. Any discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shire?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Okay. Utility easement acceptance, Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider acceptance of a utility easement from Gwyn Jewel for sanitary sewer construction access and general utility use on parcels forty-two A six dash three dash eight, nine, ten, eleven, twenty-five and twenty-six. Easements will develop, will facilitate development of these lots on Nichols Road.
Questions for Mr. Burke?
Do we have the same type of situation here as far as turnarounds at the end of this as once that's developed? I remember this field as a kid because I grew up in that neighborhood. This was all cedar trees and.
Unfortunately, these are existing lots on that street, so.
Been there. It was just never developed.
Never developed and there's no mechanism to require a hammerhead or a cul-de-sac. So this will simply be a, a street that deadheads.
This is part of my mid-sixties design or development when Hilldale was built.
Anybody else? We have a motion?
I'll move the town council accept the sanitary access and utility easements from Gwyn Jewel for parcels forty-two A six dash three dash eight, nine, ten, eleven, twenty-five and twenty-six and authorize the town manager to execute the deed of easement as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shire?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit, uh, construction plans do show a modified hammerhead at the very end in that open space.
Okay.
So we're going to try to build a turnaround big enough for a trash truck. Not sure a school bus would be able to turn around down there.
Right, but just, yeah.
But trash truck, emergency vehicle. So there was some unplatted land at the end of that Nichols Road extension that was unclaimed. So we're going to try to build, we're going to try to build the, yeah, Steve's got it up there.
Yeah, I know from.
It doesn't show it there on the, right there on the tax maps. But if you look at the plat itself, it's, there it is. See it?
Okay.
So that piece exists. It's, it's actually a portion of the real estate that was never taken up in our, in a lot until the surveys were actually being done. So we're, construction plans do have a plan to have something right in here.
Okay. Well, I know that, and the elevation drops off.
Correct.
Back there as well, if I remember right. So, okay, that's good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Danielle? We moved the second. Already did?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll keep you up.
Thank you. All right. ARPA, water treatment plant pumps. Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider approval of the use of ARPA funding to replace the pump equipment at the water treatment plant finished water building and raw water building. Cost estimates for this work is approximately two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, two hundred and eight for the finished water, seventy-nine for the raw water. Council has also requested to allocate a ten percent contingency to allow a total allocation of three hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Counsel? Questions for Mr. Burke or?
Definitely.
Mr. Haddick is here tonight, Joey. Nice to have you. Thanks for being here.
Mr. Haddick said. Does pretty much cover what we discussed and.
This would cover.
Get you in good shape?
Yes.
There's a few more wish lists that the water plant has, but this is the.
The other is the SCADA, which is pretty, pretty big too, but we're going to get some other pricing on that and, you know, and see what we can do because we found some discrepancies with our current SCADA when we just had our plant inspection. So we need to get some of that figured out. But yeah, the raw water and the finished water are huge needs right now. Raw water right now has no VFDs. So when those pumps cut off, it's water hammer, they lock up. The finished water pumps are probably almost thirty years old and they've been rebuilt to the max. So it is to be huge for the water plant after the time.
You don't have any sense of how much that would save having the VFDs in there? Do you, just on utilities?
I don't know. We had a, we had an electricity study done once before, but it was tough for her to figure out the raw water building because there's no VFDs. The other thing with the finished waters, right now we have divertible pumps and it's new to the horizontal. So we can lift them straight up and work and we don't have anything hanging over our heads. And that's going to be it too.
The last time we did that, Joey, it was thirty-two months. We saved enough electricity savings in thirty-two months to pay for the cost of the VFDs.
There you go.
Under three years. For the, for the finished water. We haven't done the raw.
Variable frequency drive.
Of course.
So basically that's just a soft, a soft start stop for the pumps. And we have them on everything. And we have them on everything except the raw water right now, but the finished are, I think they're thirteen, fourteen years old, and we, we had them shut down not long ago, and we figured out how to kind of bypass it a little bit, but we don't have a bypass on that where we can run those finished water pumps on hand. So, when this alarm for the VFD goes off, you cannot run them in hand. So, we had to get a bypass for the VFD to get it working, but with this new upgrade, we will have a bypass for a hand drive where we can run it on hand, and that's gonna be big for us too.
Anybody else?
Money well spent.
I think this is a good, good expenditure.
There's choice, Joe.
Yes?
I move that the Town Council approve the allocation of three hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred of the Town's ARPA funding to the water treatment plant to replace the finished water and raw water pump equipment as presented.
Second.
Second, sir.
Second.
Right, any discussion? Stephanie?
It's okay.
You seconded it.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
You just want to take over.
You're gonna do Danielle's job there for some...
You didn't get your nap this afternoon.
I did. I've been fighting thunderstorms and paving and everything all day today, it's terrible. All right, let's see, let's keep moving. All right, ARPA, Page Valley News Advertisements.
Council's requested to consider approval of the use of ARPA funding to continue advertising on the Page Valley News website, annual cost being seven thousand, seventy-two dollars.
I, I think it's a, it's a good investment. I think we get a lot of coverage and a lot of exposure through, through the Page Valley News, and it kind of allows us to submit information, and it's a good, a good venue for, for a lot of the things that we're doing.
Well, Steve, you, you put the ad up there, you're pretty happy with?
Yes, sir, they're very, very responsive whenever we requested them to change out any of the advertisements. They've been very responsive to that, and, and we've had good response from all the different ads that we put in there, so staff would recommend continuation of this advertising.
Do those click through to our website? They do?
They do, yes.
Just the front page though, I, then I'll go to the specific part of the page.
I, I thought both did, but, uh, Randy, I...
No, he, he's saying it links to, to your front page on your website.
Townluray.com.
Both, both the front page ad and the inside ad both link to the...
Just the main page, the main, yeah.
Yes, yeah, there's that, yes.
If, um, I would like to just give you a little update if I can have two minutes or so, if that's all right?
All right, Randy, sure, thank you.
Uh, I wanted to, first of all, I wanted to, to thank all of you for, um, I usually don't need a mic to be mic'd, um, for this past year, for your support, it really does mean a lot, and thank you for your consideration here tonight. Uh, you guys do one of the most effective uses of your space because Steve changes them out on a regular basis, he uses a different ad on the front and a different ad on the inside, and I've probably heard more comments about, about ads in general from, from you all as clients, probably than more than a lot of the others, because you're using the space very effectively. Uh, traffic in general, generally speaking, has about doubled since probably the time I was here last year, where we were doing maybe, say, five hundred to seven hundred and fifty users a day, we're now up in the thousand to fifteen hundred users a day range. Where we were doing maybe a thousand to fifteen hundred page views a day, we're now in the twenty-five hundred to three thousand a day. Um, we are approaching two million page views since we launched on February third, two thousand twenty. Uh, in two thousand twenty-two will be our first calendar year, in which in, from January one to December thirty-first, we will have surpass a million page views. Um, so by being on the front page and the inside page, you're getting every single click on that website, so you're looking at in the next year, if you renew, you're looking at over a million sets of eyes going on those ads. Business has picked up in the last three to six months on the revenue side of things. We've seen a lot more interest in local businesses starting to catch on, and the thing that makes me feel real good about that is we really haven't gone out and beat the bushes a lot. There's a lot of, I mean, I would say ninety percent of that has just come to us and, and kind of fallen in our lap, so to speak. Um, some of the clients we have, but so I think that's a testament that folks are looking at it, they're sharing it on Facebook, they're reading the stories, they're talking about the stories. Uh, Page Valley News is being mentioned in public meetings, it's becoming, uh, at least on a conversational level, a public, a paper of public record, and I'm gonna talk, talk about that in just a second. Um, another aspect of what we're doing that's not specifically on the website is the PVN sports broadcasting that we're doing at the high school basketball and football games. We are partnering with the NFHS Network, and we provide audio commentary for those. That's going really well. This Friday night, we got the Big Panthers and Bulldogs, uh, this Friday Night Football game, and, uh, this football season, we've more than doubled revenue from last football season, so we're, we're seeing continued growth in, in almost all areas. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's why he needs to abstain, must abstain, uh, from my point of view. Uh, uh, and so with, with that said, um, you know, I said the same thing last year, I'll wrap up here in just a, on two, two more points. Uh, one, you know, I said last year, first of all, I wanted you to invest in this because you thought it was a good marketing tool. That's what it, that's what it is. It is not a quid pro quo for news coverage, it's not anything else, it is a marketing tool to get out your information about your employees, upcoming events, July fourth, the many things that you guys used it for. That's what it's there for. But the second sort of underlying reason that I think, then hope that you'll continue to support us, is because you gotta support local journalism. I think a lot of small communities don't realize how perilously close they are to having no media. Take Clark County, for example. There is no media dedicated to Clark County and hasn't been since two thousand and eight. That's when the Clark, uh, Times Courier, I believe it was called, was shut down by Mr. Byrd, and they get coverage from Winchester. I'm not saying they're not covered, but there's no dedicated media to that county. You know, what happens if Page County has to be covered by TV Three and, uh, the Daily News Record? Sure, you know, if there's a bad incident, they'll be here within minutes. You know, they'll be here as quick as the car can get over the mountain, but are they gonna be at, covering every meeting? Are they gonna be covering every game, that, that kind of thing, uh, that you get out of local media? Um, in terms of having two sources of local media right now, I think the town is lucky because a lot of the papers readers are not my readers, a lot of my readers aren't the papers readers on a kind of an eighty-twenty guestimate split. Uh, so I think in many ways, the county is, is, has an advantage there. But with that said, and, and hoping that local government, local business will continue to support local media, because I do think that may not be as far away from being in sort of a news desert or no media, local media, as you might think. You know, we're doing okay, we're growing, we're doing fine, but if something happens to us and the paper, papers all across the country are consistently going down, which is one area that I want to end up on, is a little, plant a little seed about public notices, something that will directly affect you guys. Uh, right now, the way the law is stated, it is required in print, okay, and it's even on, on an appeal process required to go in another print. Well, you know, that argument has been argued in the General Assembly for at least fifteen years, the Virginia Press Association, which is made up mostly by newspapers, has fought very hard because public notices, a government mandated revenue stream, is pumping up print media, it's keeping them going, and everybody knows it. And, and I, and I will openly admit that if you looked at information as a pyramid, like your food pyramid, that big base is print journalism. It still, it still is, even though it's shrinking, and then we're going through a transitional phase, you're seeing more online only sites pop up, Hburgcitizen.com, Falkir now, Loudon now, The Cardinal Review, Virginia Mercury, um, Madrap.com, and they're starting to go into Green County now and cover that as well, Charlottesville Tomorrow, and on and on and on. So, and, and then if you even look at communities that still have the newspaper going, their website, in almost every circumstance across the state, across the country, really, their website has a bigger readership than their print version. So, it is inevitable, even the people in General Assembly who've kind of fought it, realize that, okay, the argument that not everybody has access to online media is growing very thin, particularly considering Page County, in what, eighteen months, is gonna have ninety-eight percent of the county available, have broadband available to them. So, we are looking at, and I don't know if it's gonna happen this year, next year, three years from now, but eventually, uh, we're, we're gonna be petitioning the General Assembly, we hope to, in two thousand twenty-three, to, uh, change the law. If not change it openly and replace, replace the word, you know, print or newspaper with media, then at the very least, at the end of the law, where it gives, a section gives the local localities the opportunity to petition the court, circuit court, to use another media outlet as a paper of record to print their public notices, I want to at least get that changed to maybe open up the door for people like us, because we're in the growing part of the industry, the print is in the dying part of the industry. So, why would you pay the rates and, you know, the thousands of dollars you're paying for public notices with the idea that you're trying to get it out to the most people in the public as you can, most of your constituents, when potentially it would cost you more money to put it into print to reach less readership, and in some cases significantly less readership, maybe fifty percent? So, it's kind of the same argument back when, I won't call a name, but a former, uh, chairman of the Page County Board of Supervisors didn't like the editorial that was in the paper, so he decided he wasn't gonna give us the public hearing notices, and he was gonna go with the Daily News Record, even though at that time, the paper probably had six to seven thousand copies going out a week, where the DNR had maybe a hundred and fifty copies that were being bought or in the county, or ma- maybe three hundred, you know, it was still significantly different, and the cost difference was four or five times, you know, it was hugely different. We wrote an editorial about it, and quickly the public notices came back in the paper, but, but I'm just making a point about if you can save money and you can reach more people, the law should not mandate a monopoly for print, particularly where, from where I stand. I shouldn't be kept out by state law when I'm providing the same service. So, you know, I think the law is outdated, I think a number of people in Richmond agree, just a matter of getting everything together in time, and if we don't get it done this year, we'll try again next year. But, any questions?
All right, thank you, Randy.
All right.
All right, Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I'll move the Town Council approve the allocation of seven thousand, seventy-two dollars of Town's ARPA funding to advertise, um, in the Page Valley News, on the Page Valley Web News site as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Upstate.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Okay, Code Amendment, Darry Lake Buildings, Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir, Council's requested to continue their discussions about the Code Amendment to Chapter twenty-six buildings and, and building regulations regarding Darry Lake Buildings and private property during the past month, uh, worked to develop the matrix for, uh, to evaluate these, these, uh, properties. We've also had discussion with the county at the joint meeting, the county brought issues specific to demolition and county's issuance of a demolition permit. The town attorney has indicated that, um, through the code, um, that the town would be acting as their, the county's agent, I'm sorry, the property's agent to obtain the demolition permit. However, the use of that should be limited, uh, to properties that meet the specific requirement of, uh, immediate and imminent threats to the community. Uh, in discussion with the, the city of Winchester, they have a process that goes through several stages. They start out with code enforcement, if code enforcement, uh, is not successful to abate the issue, then they, they work through, typically the courts to, um, obtain demolition. One of the questions that had come up at the, um, at the joint meeting regarding, is this a form of eminent domain? It is not, the town never intends to take ownership of the property, it's simply a mechanism to allow the town to pursue code enforcement of, um, collected properties within the, um, and so this is just not going to be for you all to continue the discussion, um, and we anticipate this will continue on to your work session, uh, at the end of this month.
I thought the matrix you came up with was good, I mean, that, that's the kind of thing that I think is, uh, some sort of standard, uh, that helps us justify why we went after a certain property, so I think that was good.
In any of your research on this, have you run across any unintended consequences where someone might cheat the system by purposefully knocking out a window here or there, or tearing out a door, and then they can qualify for a full tax abatement? Just curious.
With, with both, uh, Winchester and Winchester, none of them have indicated that, uh, however, through their, their, their matrix, they simply identify, they prior, they're prioritizing the long-term issues. They've, they're, like the town, they've only been in this game for a year, year and a half, so, uh, I am sure that long-term, there might be someone that would try to, uh, take advantage of the system. However, that's part of why we're trying to go through this slowly, so that if there are opportunities for the town to limit that exposure and limit the opportunities for someone to take advantage, we want to make sure that we do that, um, but, given time, someone will figure out a way to, to, to take...
So, you were wanting, it's like, okay, what's my checklist of what I have to do on my property?
I neglected for a longer period of time for it to decline, even though the intention was to improve it, but wait until it's forced, and then you do the improvement and you get the tax payment.
And then you pay the tax.
But, yeah, we have to figure out how...
Not that I would ever do such stuff.
No, but I mean, how do I avoid that, like, or how to prevent that?
One of the, one of the... One of the, the, the matrix items was the, the length of time that it's been vacant. If you have a building now that is making you money, you're, you know, shooting yourself in the foot to, uh, possibly save a few hundred dollars.
Of course.
But you're not gonna be getting any benefit from the building for a number of years, so, uh...
I, I don't think the tax abatement in the case of the town is that lucrative.
Uh, sure.
Well, but, but on the flip side of that, the whole reason we're having this conversation tonight are due to some buildings that have been years that this has been pushed or tried to get someone motivated to do something and, and not, not happened, so, yeah, that's, yeah, typically you wouldn't think that would be the case, but we've got it, that's why we're here.
Steve, I didn't understand, why is it fifteen years for the tax abatement?
That's what the state says we have to provide as a incentive to that property owner. It's, it's a minimum that the state establishes, we can't go any less.
So, it's not something that just arbitrarily came up?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir. Now, as far as your question of can I throw a softball at a couple of my windows, that's where the, the, going through the, um, the code enforcement, but we can, if broken windows is something that the town can pursue, and we have the ability that if they fail to do that, we can board them up. Um, it's not, again, not that, that the perfect solution would be for someone to fix the windows, but the opportunity that the town has through code enforcement to secure the property, it would be to, to pay to board it up and then place a lien on it.
And then put a lien on, sure, uh, yeah, I understand that, so it's not, I mean, it wouldn't be advantageous, most likely, I would say.
In the same breath, there's been, from my understanding, there's been offers to a couple of these properties that have been vacant for a number of years, and the, the property owner just has failed to, to deal with that, so, again, I can't put myself in that position of, of being able to give you why someone's doing what they're doing.
It might be just enough to put a little motivation in someone who's, again, a lot of them, people are paying the property taxes, um, that people are trying to, even in some cases, buy the properties from, and they're, and they're not doing it, so I think, I think it's a great program, and I'm glad we probably moved forward with it.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
All right, anybody else again? It was just a discussion tonight, and we'll take it up to the work session. Is, are we good with that? All right, let's move on, ARPA?
Yes, sir, again, uh, Council's requested to discuss any of the priorities that they might have for ARPA funding, uh, and that, uh, staff would, would, would believe that this could continue on to your work session for a more open discussion, uh, for prioritization. If there's anything, I know that Council has talked about us possibly developing a, a program for, uh, non-for-profits, if Council desires, we can at least take a, a first stab at that, so that you can have something to discuss at your, your work session as far as the, the framework for advertising similar to what we did... as far as the framework for advertising similar to what we did for the, and I can't remember the anagram of what the previous, the.
CARES.
CARES, thank you. We had set something up for CARES so we can, we can present that, an updated version for ARPA for y'all to work through about how you would want to consider applications from non-for-profits for ARPA funding.
Thoughts on that, counsel? Questions for Mr. Burke?
No, I thought this matrix, this hard copy is pretty useful. I talked to Danielle before the meeting. So if you look to the left, she has a list of what's been spent, but you see a little over three point five million has been allocated or spent. And if you look to the right on the gray, I mean, as of tonight, we just allocate three fifteen seven and a little over seven thousand, so you can add, you know, we're at thirty-eight, three point eight seven billion or something like that.
Yeah, so looking with the addition of the approvals tonight, the finished pump and raw water pump, we are at a total of three point eight million in paid or committed funds. And when we say committed, those are items that we have either solicited bids for or ordered and so forth. So then that takes us over to the right column. And I apologize, this is the revised copy that's on your desk. On the right-hand column for undetermined, those are ideas that we have discussed previously, items that maybe we haven't nailed down an exact amount. So inclusive of all of those items, we would still be looking at being over our COVID funding by about, or I'm sorry, ARPA funding by about a hundred thousand dollars. So we probably are getting to the point where we need to look at making some of those decisions and prioritize those items on the right-hand side and just sort of nail down amounts, like Steve said, amounts for nonprofits, business grants and so forth. Sort of pare down those items and how we choose to qualify that.
What is our deadline? Is it twenty twenty-four? January of?
In that neighborhood, I forget the exact date, but we've got.
So budgetary purposes, we've kind of scheduled things out through like twenty-four, twenty-five, but I think we will, I think we'll get through those numbers a little quicker. Just depending on ordering and so forth, but I think we look there faster.
And we don't have any reporting requirements the way we're proceeding, correct?
I believe every year we have to say that we are continuing to operate under, and I forget what the term was, but recovery, the reporting requirements thus far have been minimal and we anticipate that to continue.
Which is why you'll see there, like, under account management, we've only really allocated fifteen thousand on that item of account management because we just don't, you know, we haven't had those requirements so far and we just don't know as far as wrap-up is concerned if we will still need those. So we still have a little bit allocated there.
We're actually still in the plan.
Allocation September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, total expenditure by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six?
We have to spend it by then, but we have to have it fully allocated by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, man.
Would definitely, you know, the great news is if we spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year or more, we're gonna get a single audit through our audit firm, RFC. So we have itemized, detailed, like if we had to go back and report whatever, we're gonna have a single audit report for this ARPA spending every year. As long as we spend, you know, more than seven hundred and fifty, which we have.
You know, you think about it, I mean, we'd probably be sitting around racking our brains trying to figure out how to pay for imagination station. And we've gone through and done a lot of significant upgrades, sort of, you know, do this next, you know, and they're all really our benefit for the town. So I think the slow and steady approach is probably our best approach is to keep slowly working at this. We've done a pretty good job with three point, three point eight million spent, so we're not gonna have a problem spending it, we know that. And a big conversation, I think, is talking about these electronic water meters at some point.
I do have some good news about that. Looking at financing options, if we're able to say put three hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funds down, which is that the number we have in the form?
That is the number we've.
We've got three hundred in the form of a down payment. So if we were to finance seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know, we did a five, ten, fifteen-year deal. Government cap out of Texas, Midland was, you know, one of the, but actually I checked local financing too. And five-year money is three point six seven right now for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but the payment is around a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars a year, which I'm not sure that our, our new revenues from the new, would cover that. But the sweet spot appears to be the ten-year money because it's about four percent and it's less than ninety-five thousand dollars a year. And fifteen years, a little too far to go because at fifteen, we're gonna have to start replacing battery packs. So we need to think about budgeting some monies, you know, for operational upgrades at that point in time. But if we could pay that seven hundred and fifty thousand off in ten years at four percent, our annual payment would be less than ninety-five thousand dollars and that's local money. So no fees, no prepayment penalty, none of that jazz.
What's the total cost of that?
Total cost, it's just right around a million dollars. So if we're able to put three hundred down out of ARPA and then finance seven fifty, we could cover the whole project and then just pay that out over ten years and leverage that money.
I think it's a great way to leverage the ARPA. And it's also, and you said we could, we could do this with just with a utility bond, right?
Yeah.
Without, it did not have to be a general obligation bond.
We do not have to go general obligation.
So I think, I think that's the way to go with the. We could even do a little more down three hundred if we wanted to. Yeah, we could.
Could, but we picked that number just to put into the formula just so you guys would have a starting point and know what that right side of that spreadsheet has in its list. But being able to finance that, if we're able to get to that sweet spot, we can certainly afford ninety-five thousand dollars a year in additional revenues.
And that would be between both water and wastewater.
Yeah, because you get both, you get both.
That'd be fully integrated in the billing and everything, I mean, which is.
It would, it would solve, it would solve quite a few things for Danielle's office as well as Lynn's crew and even the plant operations, you know. At that point in time, they realized that the meters are, that's the ticket box. I mean, you know, everything goes through those meters. So funding for the water and wastewater departments truly depends on that too. So if we're able to get better, more efficient, more accurate data there, over the long run, we will ultimately save money. But you gotta take the long view on that. We'll probably go through one battery replacement in fifteen years and then we'll start to get to the point where, but in the meantime, you have all those non-dollar efficiencies that you've multiplied upon that helped you every single year. So there's things that are money related and things that are operational related, which indirectly transfer, to say.
One of the benefits too is customer service.
Exactly.
I mean, you can easily, if a customer has a complaint, you can easily pinpoint it, show them.
Sixty-five day history, twenty-four hours a day. Oh, your water usage went up at two A M. on nine seventeen and it lasted for eight hours. Was your hose on filling your swimming pool a while back? Because this thing says it was. And they're like, oh, yeah, you're probably right.
Or to their advantage if it.
It works both ways.
Both ways, yeah.
It works both ways. If there's a leak, then we're able to see that very easily. So that was good news. I was surprised to see ten-year money at four percent that, in today's market, that they were willing to obligate to that.
I think that's something we should seriously consider. Maybe by next, maybe next work session really. Because the interest rates aren't gonna, they're, they're gonna go up.
This is a sixty-day quote and if I get a term sheet then for the work session meeting, that'll buy us another sixty days to decide how we're gonna act, but.
If council's comfortable, we can include that for consideration at your October meeting.
And maybe look at five, just look at with five hundred down, would do, maybe?
It changes the math equation significantly. For every fifty thousand dollars we go up in down payment, it changes that. Plus, the more we're willing to put down, the less we have to finance, the better rate we get. They have less, the bank has less exposure. So the whole equation changes, you know, every dollar you put down, you guys know that, so. I'll go back and get a couple of different scenarios, three hundred down, four hundred down, five hundred down. See how it pans out.
That's why I think it would be, would be kind of nice if we could sort of pinpoint some of these other items and we might see where those savings could be that we could then apply. But, you know, like we said, I think the true value is in the accuracy. The accuracy for my department, the accuracy for Joey and just providing extra data, data that we've not ever had. You know, we had a situation today where, you know, someone calls in and they say, well, I'd like an adjustment, have a repair bill. But how do we justify those things, you know? When we have that data and we can show them, this is your use for this time period, that's really critical for, you know, not making maybe an adjustment that wasn't necessary or just providing that customer with that information that they're lacking, so.
We'll have some updated information.
Okay.
Anybody else on ARPA? Mr. Watkins, you have anything for us?
Don't have anything tonight, mayor, thank you.
Thank you for being here. Counsel comments, anybody?
Oh, yes, I do have one. I've gotten so many compliments for our new park out of Ralph D., so. Kids love it, they love the zip line. It's got just the right level of risk and adventure without it being, you know, the ones from when we were kids. So it's good, very good. Not as many trips to the hospital, that's right.
All right, anybody else? I have a thank you note from Brian at People Inc. thanking us for participating in the ribbon cutting out there. A thank you note from the Cook family for our thoughts and these flowers for them. And I have a thank you note from Nancy Kraus, the president of the Page Library Association, thanking us for our continued support. Steve, I don't think we have any ribbon cuttings or anything scheduled. We have a little break here. Do we have anything?
We do, just if anyone is interested in being a judge for the Halloween contest, please let Jennifer know so that we can include you.
Anybody else have anything?
Hopefully everyone has what they need for the B M L conference. If you are lacking a preservation copy or anything like that, just let me know.
That's it? We're done.